It's indifferent. Okay, let's call this meeting to order. It is now five, uh, six thirty-one. I'm a little late. Could I please have a roll call? Are we in place? Okay. No problem. It is six thirty-two. Yes, Rita.
Covert. Eisenman. Esri. Portato. Goss.
Here.
Harper. Ingram.
Present.
King Taylor. McGuire. Patterson. Rector.
Here.
Store.
Here.
Summers.
Here.
Taylor. Thorisland. Tinsley.
Present.
I'm gonna butcher this one. Vachaspati.
Here.
Wilken.
Here.
Young.
Here.
Clemmons.
Here.
Rosales.
Here.
Okay, I seek the approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting. Could I get a motion? Okay, move by Jim.
Second.
Second by Charles. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Seek approval of the minutes for May fourteenth, twenty nineteen. Can I get a motion for that? Move by Stan. Second. Second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Great, thank you. Public participation, I don't have any slips here in front. Are there any individuals in the audience that would like to come up and address the board? Seeing none. Uh, board comments. Uh, Chris Store.
Thank you. On behalf of a, uh, resident and, uh, former county board member, James Quisenberry, I'd like to read into the minutes, uh, this letter of concern. Dear Champagne County Board, I have a couple of concerns that I would like to raise with regard to emergency notifications in Champagne County as a result of the recent event in Urbana and the event last June in Champagne. I have encouraged like-minded citizens to reach out to their municipal and community leaders to press this issue. The first concern is regarding the events in Urbana three weeks ago. I commend the city of Urbana and Champagne County for their response and support after the event. It was a fast-moving event in the dead of the night on a holiday weekend, so it was hard to stay ahead and notify people of the event. Because of the lack of warning of what became multiple destructive tornado touchdowns, I would encourage our elected officials to press the National Weather Service for, one, an explanation of why there were no watches or warnings in advance of the event, and, two, suggestions or changes that could improve our ability to identify future similar events earlier. I know that the answers to these questions may not give us any comfort or alternatives, but I do think they need to be asked and answered. The second concern is based on the two incidents in the past year that lead me to believe that the changes to policy for acting on severe weather have been changed such that they now err on the side of no notification rather than on the side of false alarms. I understand the reasons why there has been an attempt over the past several years to reduce false alarms, but I think a majority of the public would prefer to have a few false alarms rather than not be alerted when it is needed. Comments that I've heard in response to questions about this include, we are following guidelines that a group of fifteen area representatives agreed to. Two, sirens are only for people outside. Three, sirens are old technology and people shouldn't depend on them. I would ask that these new guidelines be published for public comment and then reviewed and approved by our elected representatives in both in the county and city governments. This would make sure that the public understands the changes and has a chance to push back on a policy that doesn't meet our needs and expectations. I would also ask that our leaders stop undermining what has been and continues to be an effective and understood emergency notification tool. The following are true. People inside buildings expect the sirens to be used and have been conditioned for decades that a known threat will result when the sirens being sounded. People are outside at all hours in our communities. There is no time when sirens should be sounded because people aren't outside. New sirens are being added and broken sirens are being repaired. This is a dependable technology that continues to be effective. Not everyone can own a weather radio and not everyone can afford a smartphone, two technologies that are useful if available but also not infallible. I respect and appreciate the contributions of the sheriff's office and the EMA staff and know they are hard-working, committed individuals. I ask that you, the county board, encourage them to respect and listen to honest questions from concerned members of the community. Now would be the time to have this conversation when the incidents without warning have not resulted in injuries or loss of life. Mr. Quisenberry was unable to, uh, come to the meeting and I agreed to read a letter on his behalf. I will only add that the, uh, uh, I've received several, uh, email inquiry, uh, inquiries about this that follow along the lines of what Mr. Quisenberry's letter, uh, outlines. And, uh, I've also been approached by people in the community who verbally, uh, had opinions, uh, of a similar nature. I've also had some that, uh, are quite comfortable with the circumstance as it is.
Thank you for your comments this evening, uh, Mr. Chris Store. Uh, this is a good time for board members to also communicate if you're on any liaison committees, boards and commissions to inform the board of those meetings with you and those constituents. Uh, this was just basically an opportunity to open that up. So if you wanted to use, uh, board comments for this purpose, you, moving forward, can do that. And there was another additional comment, and you could probably guess who, that indicated that please speak into your microphones, especially, uh, staff members, that they cannot hear you, uh, during the meeting. So speak loudly and clearly, uh, because these meetings are recorded and the audience has indicated that they can't hear the discussion that we are normally having here on the floor. Uh, without further ado, Chairman Goss, finance, could you give your report? I'm sorry. Oh, you gave a half-hand, that's what it is. Thank you, uh.
Okay, microphone. Into the microphone. As the board liaison to Visit Champagne County, uh, I have been attending those meetings regularly and, uh, today just happened to have taken part representing the county and that particular board at the ISHA Golf Scramble, I guess we'll call it. I don't golf very often, so it was a fun experience, but there weren't a lot of people ready to do it because much of VCC is currently in Washington, DC. So, uh, I got a pretty excellent sunburn on the back of my legs and spent about six hours in the out-of-doors today and, uh, repping the county board at Visit Champagne County. Great.
Thank you for that debriefing, uh, Mr. Ingram. Mr. Young?
Okay, can everybody hear me? I'm the liaison for the Community Coalition and they are in, they meet once a month, um, the second Wednesday every month. Uh, for the last five, seven years, I believe, they've been meeting at the, um, Champagne Library and one of they big multi-purpose room, but due to the size, a lot of people have been coming, standing room only. They will, um, be meeting tomorrow for the first time at the Hawthorne Hotel, which, um, is holiday annals, the Hawthorne Hotel. I think the address was one-on-one Trade Center over by Steak and Shake off Neal Street. Neal Street, Kirby Avenue, somewhere around there. They were meeting tomorrow from three-thirty to five. It's been on the news, paper, um, not the newspaper, on the news. And, um, I believe newspaper too. So, hope you guys come out. Standing room only, it's getting bigger and bigger. Thank you.
Thank you for that update, Mr. Young. Um, I don't know if any of you knew that I was on the CU Public Health Board and, uh, we're reviewing, uh, farmers market permits for food and vendors. Uh, that's something that was on a temporary basis, but there's been some issues regarding that you could only take a limited number of permits for the farmers market. Uh, so basically, we're looking and revising some of those policies and issues regarding the sale of eggs, uh, pies, and, uh, we're trying to determine how is that specified by the square footage of the tent or by the square footage of the freezer or the oven? And, uh, that is yet to be determined. There's individuals that have sort of brought out some interest that if they have a permit for a restaurant and they cater, do they need another permit if they go to Ranthool? Well, if you have a, uh, a permit for the, for the city, you need a different permit for the county. So you just can't go with your food truck and so, and the county, county fair because it's the county, so the county has to get involved. You have to get a county license and it's a little bit more complic- complicated than, than just moving your food truck clear across the county for any of the fairs. So we were, we're reviewing that and we're looking into, uh, simplifying it for vendors that cater versus, uh, serve their own foods versus food trucks versus restaurants. So that's one of the things that we get involved with and we meet on a monthly basis. Uh, there's the Champagne Township Supervisor, Andrew Qua- Andrew. Kornstrom. And there is Cunningham Township, Danielle Shanathwaite as well, sits with me on that committee. Okay, Mike Ingram.
Uh, Eric Thorisland isn't here today, but, uh, I'd just like to report that he is a part of the Lincoln Legacy Committee and we've heard more about the Lincoln Legacy Committee, I think, in our caucus meetings the last couple of months than probably anybody has in some time, it seems like. And, uh, just, I'm sure he would want us, want me to report that Lincoln still does have a legacy and it is alive and well, uh, with Eric Thorisland. Thank you.
And, and Mike, I'll let you, since you have the mic, could you report us on, uh, the mailboxes at the courthouse? Cause I know that was finalized.
From the Facilities Committee, uh, we got a report on the mailboxes, or, sorry, the, uh, the lockers, not mailboxes, I guess, um, that will be placed outside of the courthouse uh, to kind of replace the ones that have been at the, uh, inside of the sheriff's office across the street. Uh, these are in, they are being, uh, retrofitted and should be placed and ready to go sometime soon. Um, within the next couple of weeks is what they're looking at. Uh, and until that time, those that exist currently in the sheriff's office are being kept open until we get those done. There will be quarter lockers, you won't get your quarter back, but hopefully, uh, everybody will be able to procure a quarter for that.
Thank you very much, cause I know you took the lead on that, uh, issue regarding individuals that take the public transportation and carry a phone and don't have a place to put it. So, uh, I know you were the lead behind that. Okay, Jim, finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, tonight for finance, uh, item A, one, A, Budget Transfer nineteen dash zero 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 four, Fund Zero Eight Zero, General Corporate, to Department Zero Two Zero. Total amount is twelve hundred dollars. The reason is to transfer from temporary salary to cover expenses for conferences and training for both CPAs in the office. Is there such a motion? Mr. Esri, second, Ms. Fortato. I do wanna state that Auditor Danos is in the room. If you have questions, is there any discussion? Seeing none. Go ahead, Mr. Store.
Since Mr. Danos is here, I'd ask, was there any new issues that were, uh, anything that was learned at the training that, that the county board should be aware of or that may have an impact on, on our, uh, on, on the handling of our finances?
Hi, Chris, every year there are updates in the way GASP is treated and those, uh, changes were duly noted. We do get publications that reinforce the lessons. Um, this was a great trip and, of course, is my first attendance of the National GFOA Government Finance Officers Association. And I was happy to go with my chief deputy.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, item two, A, Monthly Reports, we're up to March of two thousand nineteen. They are on the website. Uh, item two B, A Resolution Authorizing the Cancellation of the Appropriate Certificate of Purchase of Real Estate Permanent Parcel Number two zero dash zero nine dash zero three dash two two nine dash zero one five. Is there such a motion? So moved. Mr. Clemmons, is there a second? Mr. Rosales, any discussion? Ms. Fortato?
Uh, just because I know folks follow these, um, both of these resolutions, correct, Jim, are, um, the original property owner maintaining the property?
As I, yes, I believe so.
Cause I know folks in the public are always interested in these just to make sure that we're doing their due diligence on making sure that, that, that they have the first ability to do that.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item two C, Resolution Authorizing the Cancellation of the Appropriate Certificate of Purchase on Real Estate Permanent Parcel Number three zero dash two one dash zero four dash three two eight dash zero five seven. Is there such a motion? Mr. Vachaspati, second. Mr. Clifford, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, now we are up to two D, Resolution Authorizing the Addendum to Purchase Surface, Surface, Service Agreement with Joseph E. Meyer and Associates Providing for the Creation and Administration of a Delinquent Tax Liquidation Program. Is there such a motion? Ms. Fortato, second. Mr. Esri, discussion? I would, I would note that we did meet with the treasurer at Finance Agenda Review and this is simply, um, this company has done our, done our work since nineteen ninety-eight for the tax sale and they're tweaking the fees up a little bit to, to cover their cost of doing business. So, they haven't moved the fees for quite some time. So this is, it's just a simple move. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, we are up to item three A, Monthly Report for the Auditor is up to May two thousand nineteen. George, are we? They are in. Okay, item four, County Clerk, four A. Request Approval of the Illinois State Board of Elections Voter Registration State Grant, two thousand nineteen Acceptance Agreement. This is an acceptance of a grant that we have gotten in the past. Is there such a motion? Mr. Ingram, second. Mr. Rector, discussion? Ms. Fortato?
Um, just, I just wanna make sure that I'm correct on this. Um, we've already have this money appropriated into the budget cause we anticipated this, that's correct?
That is correct.
So we won't be seeing a follow-up appropriation for this one?
Yes, we should not see a budget amendment. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, item five, Supervisor of Assessments Memorandum Regarding Amendment to the DevNet Agreement. Item five A, Resolution Authorizing an Amendment to an Agreement with DevNet Inc. for an Integrated Property Tax Assessment Extension and Collection System. Item I, Budget Amendment nineteen dash zero 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 twenty-nine. Fund One O Five Capital Asset Replacement Fund to Department Zero Two Eight Information Technology. Increased Appropriations, twenty-seven thousand. Increased Revenue, none, it's from the fund balance. The reason is the conversion of its existing data needs completed in two thousand nineteen in order to implement the CAMA software through DevNet for two thousand twenty. Conversion includes approximately twenty-three thousand and fifty parcels and any existing photographs saved in the system. Is there such a motion? Ms. Fortato, second. Mr. Harper, discussion? Ms. Fortato?
Is, does this need to be two votes?
Uh, that's a good-
Like one for the agreement and one for the budget amendment?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That, that, I just, I wasn't sure.
Thank you.
So I'll, I'll say that I'm, uh, motioning for the first one.
For, for item A. Sorry, I skipped right through it.
No, I wasn't sure, to be honest, so.
So, to clarify that, we are, we are gonna vote on the Resolution Authorizing the Amendment to the Agreement for DevNet. So there's a motion, are you still good? Harper, okay, so is there discussion on the agreement? Mr. Vachaspati?
Yeah, um, after we do all these things, is that sort of the end of the conversion to CAMA and DevNet?
We do have Supervisor Paula here, Paula Bates. Can you answer that question for us? Go ahead, go ahead and come up to the microphone. You can just stay there, cause there might be questions as we go along further.
Hi, yes, that will be the end of the conversion.
Awesome.
For CAMA.
Other questions? Mr. Store?
Is, is there a particular reason why this couldn't have been done in-house? Why is that, uh, could you not just kind of do an import on that in-house?
The new CAMA system uses, um, a sketch program and it's through Apex. We don't have a way to convert those sketches into the new CAMA system.
Are those sketches geographically based?
No, they're sketched within a sketch program.
So they don't have any geographic coordinates?
No. No, they are just drawings of properties.
There's no surveying, uh, data or anything that's, uh, attached to those?
No. The assessors measure the properties, then we sketch them into a sketch program.
Yeah, this is typically buildings.
Right.
Oh, it, it doesn't refer to property lines?
No, it does not.
No, this is typically just the buildings that are on this, on the properties. The lines are already in the GIS system.
Okay, so they're kind, they, they were sketched from orthophotography or from what base?
From actual measurements made by the assessors. They go out and do a drawing, they measure the buildings and then we come back and enter that data into a sketch program so we have a clean picture of what the properties look like.
Okay, so if it's larger on the third floor than it is on the base, that, that, we just kinda have a footprint?
We would have a separate drawing for the third floor to show how much square footage is in the third floor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor for, favor of approving the resolution of authorizing the Amendment to the Agreement with DevNet signify by saying aye? Opposed? Nay? Motion passes. Okay, now we're ready for Budget Agreement, Budget Amendment nineteen dash zero 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 twenty-nine. Fund One O Five Capital Asset Replacement Fund to Department Zero Two Eight Information Technology. Increased Appropriations, twenty-seven thousand. Increased Revenue, none, from the fund balance. Reason is for the conversion of the data, this is the actual funding of that. Conversion of the data needs completed in two thousand nineteen in order to implement the CAMA software through DevNet for two thousand twenty. Conversion includes approximately twenty-three thousand fifty parcels for any existing photograph saved in the system. Is there such a motion? So moved. Who said that? Uh, Mr. Clemmons, thank you. Second, Mr. Clifford, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Memorandum Regarding Contract with DevNet for CAMA and Intergovernmental Agreements for the CAMA Software. Five B, A Resolution Authorizing Contract with DevNet for CAMA License, Maintenance and Support for Townships in Champagne County. Is there such a motion? Mr. Esri, is there such, is there a second? Mr. Ingram, second. Discussion on this item. Mr. Patterson?
Um, looks like the city of Champagne, uh, says that they're gonna be paying their full cost and the other townships would be getting subsidies. Why is that?
They have, um, the largest amount of parcels in the county and they were going to be purchasing their own CAMA software and they wanted to, um, be part of the CAMA that we're using. And so they agreed that they would pay their full cost.
Okay, because of the size of?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Other discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye? All opposed, say nay? Motion passes. Okay, item five C, A Resolution Adopting and Authorizing Intergovernmental Agreements for Computer-Assisted Mass Appraisal Software, CAMA. Now, there are two, two agreements in here on our package and could you explain the difference in the two and then we'll sort out which one we want to do?
Okay, the IGA number one is a two thousand subsidy, um, for each township to accept the city of Champagne. And, um, then they would pick up the remaining costs. The second one is, um, no subsidy and the county would pay the full cost for the whole county for CAMA.
Ms. Fortato, you were first? Do, your microphone, microphone?
Do we need to move one of them first?
Yeah, yeah.
I'll move, uh, I'll move option IGA number one.
That would be item I?
Item I.
Second with Mr. Rosales, discussion on moving with item I? Mr. Patterson?
Uh, just for clarity, in our packet, that is, uh, option two?
Sorry, that is option one, IGA number one.
So, I think-
But it is option two.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, we've got them separated here, let me make sure.
This, uh, page twenty-nine.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Yeah, it, in your packets, it's on page thirty-one and thirty-two. So that's actually in your packets, it says second option. However, on the front page, it's actually IGA number one. Sorry for the confusion. Mr. Esri?
Well, at the bottom of page twenty-nine, Finance Committee Recommended Action, IGA number two, two thousand dollar subsidy, or IGA number one, two thousand dollar subsidy. And that's the way it's presented on the agenda.
Yeah, there you go, that's the way it's present. Mr. Vachaspati?
So I think ju- what's going on is that under options on page twenty-nine, so it is one, the first option, two, the second option, but that's sort of the opposite of the order of the IGAs.
Yeah, so I believe the way the resolution reads, we wanna replay, we want to use IGA number one with the two thousand dollar subsidy, which meaning, we're gonna pick up two thousand dollars and the townships are gonna pick up, which amounts to a couple hundred bucks each township. I mean, there's some townships that are larger, it's gonna be a little bit more, but there are townships that can afford it, so. And that's, that's the option that Ms. Fortato moved. Can I ask the clerk, did we get a second? We did get a second from Mr. Rosales, correct? Okay, further discussion? Sorry about the confusion, I didn't pick up on- Sorry about the confusion, I didn't pick up on that, I had it in my notes, which way to do it? Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye? Opposed? Nay? Nay, okay. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, thank you Paula for being here, appreciate it. Okay, item six, Ms. Ogden, do you wanna come up to the microphone?
The monthly budget reports are at the desk with the yellow cover sheet. And I really wanna just focus mostly on state shared revenues tonight. So, corporate personal property replacement tax and income tax, you can see, are both projected to be significantly over the original fiscal year two thousand and nineteen budget. And this is predominantly due to, I mentioned this last month, but we've seen even more growth in May. Significant increases because of one-time factors. And for personal property replacement tax, the expected corporate income tax receipts for April and May were significant. And for income tax, the May distribution itself was two hundred and five thousand dollars more than the May two thousand and eighteen distribution. And that is being explained as one-time occurrences from a strong stock market and federal tax law changes. Unfortunately, however, sales tax, you can see the one cent and quarter cent sales tax revenues are underperforming, as I have been mentioning. Year-to-date, the one cent sales tax revenues are seven point six cents, six percent below the year-to-date period, and three percent for the quarter cent compared to the same year-ago period. If you have been following the state legislature's actions regarding the budget, you would have seen that they did extend the five percent cut to income tax, unfortunately. And for total revenue projections, you can see the five point one million dollar budget variance is mostly related to the transfer into the general fund in order to defees the bonds, and also, the anticipated reimbursement from the nursing home for the two million dollar transfer that the county made to the home in fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, and one point nine eight million dollars that was received from the promissory note. I also wanted to mention a use tax under state shared revenue, again, showing strong performance and largely related to, you know, increases in online sales, and particularly because of the Wayfair ruling, which the county did not budget for additional revenues in two thousand and nineteen. Moving to the expenditure report. We're projecting significant underspending in personnel, and if you look at page one seventy in your blue packet, you can see the number of positions that are vacant, and that was pretty status quo, I think, from last month. But compared to May of last year, I think we had around eight or ten positions vacant at this time last year. So, we have had significant turnover at the county, and that is translating to underspending, you know, personnel dollars, and also, underutilization, as I've mentioned, of the county's health insurance plan. The projected budget variance is two point six million dollars over the original prepared budget, largely related to the defeasance of the two thousand and fifteen bonds, and also, the anticipated repayment of the promissory note prior to the end of the fiscal year. On the summary page, the revenue to expenditure difference at this point is a projection of three point three million dollars. That translates to a projected fund balance of six point five million dollars, and a percentage of the expenditure budget of fifteen point eight percent. Are there any questions on that report?
Mr. Vachaspati.
Yeah, I know the gas, I guess that's not included in the general fund revenues, but I was wondering if you knew about that. When should we expect to see revenues from the nineteen cent increase in the gas tax?
I think that's effective July first, and that will largely affect highway or motor fuel tax funds.
Mr. Store.
Thank you. The percent of, of, of expended, or, how does this help us with the amount of surplus that we might be holding in reserve? Does it kind of bring us quite a bit closer to having a larger reserve? Or, or is it just kind of happenstance of where we're at in the, in the fiscal year?
Are you talking about the fund balance?
Yes.
So, on the third page, the fund balance projection is six point five million dollars at this point, and that's a projection for December thirty-first, so the end of the fiscal year. So, that's a significant improvement over what we ended fiscal year two thousand and eighteen at. And, and it, again, that is in anticipation of the nursing home reimbursing the county for the two million dollars that was transferred at the end of two thousand and eighteen.
And, and our goal was, is of a surplus?
The target fund balance is sixteen point seven percent.
So, we're pretty close.
So, this, this positions us, yes, closer to that number.
Other questions?
On the budget change report, there are no additions in May, so this is the same report that you saw last month. And then, a follow-up from our Moody's call. I have good news. Moody's did affirm the county's double A two rating, and also, removed our negative outlook. So, you can see here, they reference Champaign County's strength, which is a satisfactory financial position following the sale of the nursing home, a large and diverse tax base that benefits from the institutional presence of the U of I, and modest debt burden. And speaking of debt burden, one thing I wanna clarify on page three of this report, under debt and pensions, the first sentence reads, "The county's debt burden is modest. At the close of fiscal two thousand and seventeen, net direct debt totaled twenty-eight million dollars." That was prior to the defeasance and redemption of the two thousand and eleven and two thousand and fifteen bonds, so the county's actual outstanding debt is eighteen point seven million at this point, not including the promissory note. So, this is a, you know, good news that I'm happy to report.
In reference to the university, what does that mean exactly? Are they just saying because of the economic impact of the U of I?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we do have a strong tax base outside of, you know, the presence of the U of I, but I know that the expansion of the U of I helps add, and, you know, the additional residential construction that is anticipated helps add to that as well.
Other, Ms. Fortado.
Um, I just wanna thank you for the work on this. I know when Moody's gives us a call, that just kind of throws everything else out, that you all of a sudden have to do that. And so, I think that this is reflective of that we're moving in the right direction, but also reflective of your hard work, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, as Chair, I would also echo that. I mean, there's a lot of hours go into some, something like this, and, and you have, you worry about how you present things, and there's a lot of stuff that goes on in the background that we don't see. So, we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Okay, item six B, requests for reimbursement of travel expense by County Board Member Store for mileage to attend the Lincoln Heritage RCND in Paris, Illinois on May sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Is there such a motion? Mr. Vachaspati, is there a second? Mr. Young, discussion. Mr. McGuire.
Yes, thank you. Obviously, we're all part of committees, and we travel back and forth to these committees. I, I think that if we're gonna suggest that everyone gets mileage or reimbursements, that there ought to be some policy, because if we're gonna start collecting money every time we go somewhere, obviously, it's gonna be a drain on what is a limited budget for County Board. I will be voting no, unfortunately. I, I wanna support Chris and what he's doing, but I wanna support everybody, and we currently don't have a budget, or a budget or a policy for this travel. Thank you.
Mr. Richter.
I know we discussed in policy that the county executive is working on a travel policy, so that should help us down the road, so, a little more clarity.
Mr. Rosales.
As we met in policy, we also discussed that prior approval is not needed, because this was an appointment made by either the county exec or by the county board chair. So, it's an obligation to travel out of, out of Champaign, the City of Champaign and the City of Urbana, to travel to Hoopston, Arcola, and all of these other little municipalities. And I think that we have an obligation to reimburse the county board members to do that.
Mr. Patterson.
I definitely see the principle of your point, Jim. I mean, I don't, I'm on the mental health board, I don't get any sort of reimbursement, like we do with county board meetings. But I, I just put it into my phone, and that's a hundred and twenty mile round trip to Paris, Illinois. So, I, I think that we should have clarity, and I think that something being out of county might, might be the characteristics that would qualify for this.
Ms. Fortado.
I believe, we talked about this in finance, and correct me if I'm forgetting, but I believe what we discussed is until the actual travel policy is established, that we, that we would treat the, the few boards that require travel out of county in this way. That, that was my recollection of what we discussed at finance.
Yes, I think, I think it's only this board and one other regional transportation one that actually travel out of town. So, again, there isn't a policy, but there are only two of these boards, and they are appointed boards, so. Mr. McGuire.
I had been traveling to the extension, which is in Rantoul. Community Action Board traveled to Rantoul. I've been doing this for six years, and now, all of a sudden, we're changing a policy. I don't, I mean, there's multiple opportunities for this to happen, and obviously, I haven't had a policy in the past, so. And we can make every rule we want and add things as we see fit, and pretty soon, we're just changing things whenever we think it's nice for certain people. But I think at this point, we don't have a policy, and so, it shouldn't be paid. Thank you.
Mr. Young.
I ran across this problem when I first got on the board as well, and I did not see the policy in there. However, by me being policy chair and working on, I can work on implementing and starting a policy and go forward by writing one up.
There are bits and pieces in the financial policies for travel policy, but I do know this particular thing is not addressed. So, again, our, our discussion at finance was that it's an appointment, it wasn't elected, it wasn't that Mr. Store elected to go just on his own behalf, on behalf of the board. We did appoint him, so, and it is, you know, it is, it's a hall to Paris. I go three times a year, so, I do, I do realize the distance. Other discussion? So, we have a motion and a second on the board. All those in favor signify by saying aye? Opposed? Nay? Okay, motion passes. Okay, other business? I don't, I do not have any other business, anyone else on the board? Chairs' report, I do not have a chairs' report. Items to be designated for consent agenda, finance, seven A, one, one A, one B, one C, one D, four A, five A, five A one, five B, five C, one. No, no, I'm sorry, that, you're right. And then, six B, or, no, six B does not. Okay. Is that clear, Rita? Did I make that? No, six B is not. Six B was not, and five C one was not. Everything else was consent. Do you have that? Okay. Mr. Chair, that's, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gloss. Now, we move on into... Here we go. Justice and Social Services, Kyle Patterson.
I'm gonna be competing for everybody's favorite county board member tonight. There is nothing on the agenda except the monthly reports, and I do not have a chairs' report.
Record-breaking time, I enjoyed that. Thank you very much for that.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna blow that up.
Any further comments?
I would.
Yes, Jim.
Have a little other business, and go to Chris Store's comments in beginning of the meeting about the EMA, Emergency Management, and agree with those comments of Chris Alex, that maybe we should add something to a future board meeting in regards to Chris Alex's comments. I'm not sure, Crisenberry, I'm sorry. Ooh, that's so nice. As Brad knows, because he helped clean up the mess that happened at Rolling Acres, I understand, and we're not directly involved in how these storms come through town, but they seem to pop up very quickly. And the fact that it went through Urbana was bad enough in Rolling Acres, but if, if a storm just decided to pop up in the middle of Urbana and was much more destructive through campus, it'd be a major issue. And I, EMA and the people we have involved in that, I, they, they're great at what they do. Obviously, I, if there's something else we could be doing, I'd like to see if we could maybe try to figure that out. So, if we could have a meeting, bring something, have a greater discussion, and I understand all the things they talked about, but I think we've kind of touched on some of the things maybe we wanna try to have some more discussion about. So, have that with Kyle's support, maybe we should do that.
Thank you for your comments, Jim. I just wanted to add to, to that, I was part of the discussion between Crisenberry, Chris Store, and the Sheriff's Department. One of the things that I did learn is that the county does not have any alarms, so we have no alarms to sound, but it's a coordinated effort between different municipalities and governmental agencies in coordination with storm watchers and, and the weather reports that are being forecasted prior to reaching our cities. And it's up, totally up to Champaign and Urbana, they have alarms, and the university to sound their alarms as they get these warnings and get these, how would I say, warnings and forecasts moving forward. So, I think what, what happened to us just the other day was an anomaly. It was not forecasted, it was not spotted quickly enough to warn the citizens of that municipality, southwest Cham, southeast Champaign, uh, southeast Urbana. So, it was just taking us all by, by surprise, really. But it's a coordinated effort, and the sheriff indicated that they just had reviewed the policies, so there was no need to review that. I know there had been complaints that the alarms were frequently sounding off, and there was no severe inclement weather approaching. So, this was just basically a coordinated effort to get it done, get it done right, and get it done correctly without disturbing the population. Mark me if I'm wrong, if I'm wrong, Chris.
No, I, I think you pretty much got the essence of it, but I'd, I'd bring up two points. One was that the National Weather Service apparently could not see the storm because it was just... because it was just below the horizon from the radar in, at Lincoln, Illinois. So, either we need to raise the topographically the county or see if we can kind of get a better radar for the National Weather Service. The other, the other point was, one of my colleagues and neighbors said that the, an alarm was raised by a resident who spotted the tornado, but he was not a qualified weather spotter. And this training is not difficult and can be done by ordinary citizens. And where they get this certification that, of being a trained spotter so that they could call this in, and certainly, that would be additional eyes on the weather that could help us. So, we might try to see if we could raise awareness of the weather spotter training.
Yes, my...
Point of order.
I'm sorry.
I think I'm still...
Oh, I'm looking that way, that's why.
Darlene has input on the emergency management.
I just wanted to let you all know that after the meeting that was held in the community, and then the EMA folks also had a meeting, there was discussion about the siren system. And some of the sirens are older, some of the sirens are newer, but most of them are older. And so, the four jurisdictions that have, that own sirens would be Champaign, Urbana, the university, and Savoy. And there's a perimeter around all of where the sirens are. So, they have agreed to try to purchase separate, not separately, but together as a unit, new sirens that will be attached to the computer system with the weather service so that it will automatically go off and no one will have to turn it on. That is still, in this particular case, the weather service didn't see the tornado. But it's, and then, all of the sirens in all of the area will go off, not just in one area, which they're all being turned on individually now. And they're going to run that through MetCAD. And I will be preparing, Dustin and I have talked about this, I will be preparing an intergovernmental agreement so that the money flows through the county to pay the vendor so that everybody doesn't do it all separately and get not as good a pricing. So, that should be happening, I should bring that to the county board probably either in July or August.
Thank you for that information, Darlene. Yes, Mike? I'm sorry, I keep looking here for some reason. Kyle, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think Kyle's thing is just that he's still chairing, I think, at this point.
Point of order, right?
So, additional information that just, that I just thought of while the executive was talking was also, we've seen some news reports recently that some of the electronic billboards in town will be running tornado warnings, which I think is very important. That's a good visual cue for people. For anybody who's looking for additional information on how crazy that particular storm was, Chambana Weather, which is its own website, but also has a Facebook presence, did a very, very good breakdown of the similarities between it, and I believe it was the 1996 Urbana tornado, and how it was basically impossible for anybody to warn. I mean, we were warned by the National Weather Service as far as severe thunderstorms go. And sometimes with those, it's a pretty known factor that that can also get crazier very, very quickly, especially depending on how the system is moving. So, I like things like this a lot, so I spend a lot of time reading about it. And I think that site and the guy that runs it, very, very smart and has a very, has an ease at explaining it to the layperson. So, if anybody's interested in that and is curious as to why there were no... I mean, I was, I was, you know, probably one of the few county board members that was awake at that point because of my crazy hours. So, I watched it go through town, and I watched social media light up. And so, I spent most of, between about 1:00 and 5:00 in the morning, out in Savoy and in the Devonshire area, helping clean up just because of the time that I'm awake. But, so, I kind of witnessed it all roll through. And I, from my very, you know, obviously, not trained perspective, but from reading his very trained perspective, was that there probably was not much different that could have happened in that particular situation because it was very atypical and very strange cell that came through. But I do enjoy the idea of us finding more people that would be interested in being spotters, if that's something that we could, you know, create a program for or that we could just do some sort of outreach. More training in that regard from people who are interested in it, who could officially be tasked with that would be great.
I just want to commend the city of Urbana for their cleanup efforts. They had crews out there for like, three days after the storm, picking up brush, helping chop down, or, you know, remove the trees that had fallen out of people's houses and stuff. Those folks really worked hard to get that storm debris cleaned up. So, you know, I just want to commend the workers and the city for, you know, doing that work.
I would echo that for Champaign. I mean, they were out that night by 2:00 in the morning. That was a lot of people working overtime, so, that's great, great work.
Any other comments? That's all we got.
Great, just a slight pause. It's that you had gone through your report so quickly, I thought you had completed it. And I wasn't totally aware when I saw Jim's question, and then I thought we were on to the next topic, and I apologize for that. Thank you for keeping the order of the meeting. Policy, personnel, and appointments. Charles Young.
Thank you, Chair Rosales. At this time, I'd like for Stephanie Fortato to speak up before we get started.
I, and perhaps I'm wrong. I move that we table items A through C to the full board meeting. My understanding was that we were going to do this sort of as a two-step process, that at this meeting, we were going to see the recommendations, and at the full board meeting, we were going to vote on the recommendations. I think that was the discussion that we had at the last meeting. And I also want to mention...
Point of order, please.
Oh, yeah.
This is not against our agenda, this is against our policy. We're supposed to follow the normal order of business for the cow and process the agenda as presented and voted on. Thank you.
I gave her authority to speak.
Maybe I should have tabled them at the agenda part. I don't, I didn't really realize that when we approved the agenda, maybe that's when I should have made the motion. So, if it was at the wrong time, I apologize. There's a parliamentarian. And maybe I'm wrong, maybe the executive speaks to this. And I did look on page 10 to see if there was any sort of details on the...
I repeat my point of order.
I guess you have to rule on the point of order. Oh, Charles has one.
Declined. Keep going, Stephanie. Oh, okay, I'll move it then.
I'm not a parliamentarian. In my opinion, we can't table something until there'd be a motion on the floor.
Oh, I see, like, it has to be moved first.
All right, okay, that's fine. Okay. So, before we begin, I would like to make a motion to defer all...
No, you have to ask somebody.
Okay.
I did it wrong. He's, John's right, I did it wrong.
All righty, let's keep it moving then. Appointments and reappointment under the county executive appointment. A, the county executive appointment of Champaign County Forest Preserve District One, District One position term. Seven one twenty nineteen to six thirty twenty-four. Twenty twenty-four is recommending applicant Joseph Edward. Can I get a motion? Stephanie, second motion. What's your name? Wilkins, okay. Any discussion now? Any discussion?
Is he making the...
I'm making a motion for this person's first appointment. Thank you. Any discussion?
I request a roll call when you get there.
Okay. Whoever did the second discussion, Stephanie.
So, first of all, I apologize, John, you're correct. My parliamentary procedure was incorrect. And, but I move that we table this. And just, I, as the executive, maybe I'm just misremembering this, that that was what the discussion was, that we were going to receive these and then have the week to, to read them and that we were going to vote at the full board. So, I'm not speaking on the merits of these folks. I'm just saying I thought that that was what we had agreed to. And then, I, I'm sure you're all about to, I have another parliamentary problem, is that when looking at this on item 10, on page 10, when that would have been done, when we would have had that discussion was under Paul Saylor. And I did look at this, and I did not notice, and we've already approved the minutes, so there's probably nothing that can be done. But I'm relatively sure the first motion was not carried. And in the minutes, it says that it was. And I just noticed that when I was looking to see if there was details of that discussion were in there. So, I apologize about that. I didn't notice it. My eyeballs didn't see it until just now. So, anyway, I do think that that is wrong in the minutes that we appropriated. I have no idea what you do about that, parliamentar-wise, and I don't... And so, that's not, I just wanted to mention that on the record. But, oh, we carried a cow? Okay, okay. So, I apologize. So, maybe it was at the full board then that we had that discussion. But maybe I'm recalling it incorrectly. So, but I thought that that was what we had, we had heard, is how we were going to do this. So, we would have sort of that amount of time, a little bit more time was the... Is that incorrect?
Second, any second for the table? I can second it? Leah second. Stephanie first table, Leah second. We, now we at discussion.
Go, Goss.
Yes, sir. Okay, Leah Taylor.
Yeah, I don't, don't recall now, granted, again, I'm on the opposite side of this. I don't recall having, having that suggestion. I recall the suggestion that we were going to have all the information in the board packet instead of just only the person moving forward. I remember having that discussion, but I don't remember having a discussion that we were going to wait outside of the committee meeting. The sole existence of this committee meeting at this point is to move these forward. So, if we're not going to move them forward, then I don't, I mean, we might as well move to close the meeting. I mean, why have this on, on the, on the committee? The whole, if you're going to bring these forward and then table them every time, what in the world's the reason for that?
Mike?
I believe the discussion that, or the recollection that Ms. Fortato is having is that that was, the executive was speaking to me at that point with some questions that I had. And I believe that was the suggestion was, well, I could give you all the information at one, at the cow, and then you would have it until the county board full meeting, which was, I believe, directed at me. We can look back at the video if we need to. But that, I believe, I was very amenable to that idea, so maybe everybody just thought that that was how we were going to be going forward. So, I don't think necessarily that this means that every time that anything like this happens, we will suddenly be tabling things. I believe that Ms. Fortato is just looking for some clarification and wanted to make sure that we were doing it the way that we had discussed doing it.
Any? Kyle Patterson?
I was just going to say, as far as the process goes, we can move things to the county board without recommendation from cow.
Okay. McGuire?
Well, the point of order and the process is to take the vote and to do the process that is done by the rules. You can vote them up, you can vote them down, and you can table them. But to have a discussion about what someone might have said in a previous meeting about how, what you expected isn't, not part of the table or the discussion of the person that you're voting on. So, it's out of order.
Was it recorded before, during, did you record it before Rita? Or was Rita here?
You either, you're either tabling it or voting, we're even, have a motion to table? A motion, a second, and we discuss the table? And then vote on it? And then go back to the person if we don't table it? And vote on the person that we're trying to move and do our business or not? We're here as a county board, we're supposed to do business. Executive is, puts the person up, and we decide whether that person is going to be selected. That's our choices. I don't want people doing the county board work, I don't want to do the executive's work. Apparently, we've got that confused.
Ponjel.
What is the motion? Is the motion that these are the appoint, these are the people who submitted appointments? Is the motion that we're approving Darlie, the executive's appointment of Mr. Edwards? I mean, what is the motion being made here? That's, that's, I guess... Right, but what is the motion being tabled?
All three of them, A, B, and C. Did you say? Just A, okay.
I call the question on Ms. Fortato's motion to table. And I request a roll call, please.
Roll call. This is the table. One A.
No.
Harper?
No.
Ingram?
Yes.
King Taylor? McGuire?
No.
Patterson?
Yes.
Richter? Store?
Yes.
Summers?
Yes.
Taylor? Spachi? Tinsley, I'm sorry, Tinsley?
Yes.
Yes.
Wilken? No. Young?
Yes.
Clemmons?
No.
Rosales?
Yes.
Clifford?
No.
And Rosales?
Esri, Esri? No.
So, the yes got it? So, motion to table the appointment for the county, Champaign County Forest Preserve to our next meeting. B, the county executive appoint...
A point of interest here. If we just table it, it goes away. But if we postpone it, we have to give a date to our next meeting to, for us to address these. So, what I would like to do, and I'm not quite sure the proper way to do it, is if we could suspend the rules, that way, we will be within the confines of what we're indicating. But if we go one by one with these and just basically postpone, to when? You have to give a...
To the next board meeting. Yes, which is in two weeks. Or the week, week.
Okay, that'll be fine. Yeah.
Point of order. We have a process and a policy for moving these nominations. We need to follow the nomination and the process.
We are, it was just a point of clarification.
Thank you both. Moving on to B.
A point of order. If you, if you table this, it goes away. So, you're going to move to reconsider?
So are you gonna move to reconsider it? It's tabled, so it's too late. It just moves on.
I move to reconsider. No, no, I don't, not.
No.
Oh, it's a point of order. Shouldn't this should be going to the county board without recommendation?
It has been tabled into the next full county board meeting and voted on. Moving along. B, the county executive.
Point of order, point of order. When it's tabled, it, it goes away. That's the point of that. When it's tabled, it needs to be postponed as opposed to being tabled. There's a difference between the two. Tabled means it goes away.
No, no, table me is sitting on the table, it's right there.
I disagree.
We can discuss it later. Anyhow, it has been tabled into next full county board meeting.
That was not the motion. The motion, you, you can't put words into something. It was tabled, period. It was tabled.
B, the county executive appointment for the development.
So point of order.
Disability.
So point of order. Anything that is tabled can be moved and seconded to be taken off the table at any future meeting. I will move, I commit that on Thursday, I will move and any of you could second and we could take it back off the table. If you put something, right? And, and, and so I will move on Thursday that they move off the table back onto the agenda. So it doesn't not like if something's tabled, it just like goes off into the ether.
Point of order. That wasn't what the motion was and that's not what passed.
Motion.
Point of order, you can't just say point of order to interrupt people. That's not what a point of order is.
Uh, disagree. That's what point of order is very much.
Okay.
It's very much about stopping the order.
All right, we're gonna keep it moving, okay?
Okay, let's go.
Thank you. B, the county executive appointment for the developmental abilities board. Two position term, seven, one, 2019 to six thirty, 2022. It's recommending applicants Anne Roberts and Sue Sutler. Can I get a motion? Fertado first, second motion. Ingram second. Any discussion? All in favor by saying aye? Oh, and, and, okay, I'm sorry, discussion. I didn't see no hands, any discussions?
Yeah, aye, you called for the motion.
Any nays? Any nays? Who's the nay? Okay. No. Okay. Motion passed. C, and I will go slow. The county executive appointment for the county board of health. Three position, term seven, one, 2019 to six thirty, 2022. It's recommending applicants Kathy Emanuel, Julie Kercom, Kerman, Kumar, and David Thies. Can I get a motion? Who the first, say it loud. Second. Where the second at? Okay. Any discussion? Thank you, Stephanie.
I move to table this. So I, yeah, no, I just moved to table it.
Okay. All in favor by si, oh, roll call, roll call, sorry, roll call then for the table.
That's right.
Any discussion? Okay, no discussion. Roll call.
Esri?
No.
Fertado?
Yes.
Gus?
No.
Harper?
No.
Ingram?
Yes.
McGuire?
No.
Patterson? Rector? Store?
Yes.
Summers?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Spotty?
Yes.
Wolken?
No.
Young?
Yes.
Clemmons?
No.
Clifford?
No.
Rosales?
Yes.
Okay.
10, 8, 10 yes, 8 no.
All righty. It has been tabled. Two, sheriff. Is everybody with me? A, request review of sheriff data analysis position for job content evaluation. Do we have the sheriff, the deputy here? Afterwards, I was gonna see if you wanna come up and speak through here. Uh, motion first, can I get a motion? Uh, John Ruck, first motion, Kyle Pekin second. Patterson? Go ahead.
Um, idle question?
Yeah, I, I know I was pretty, you know, critical last time this came up and I just wanna thank you and Sheriff Harmon for, you know, going through and making it something that we can really, you know, be proud of and get a good, uh, get a good candidate from. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else question? Store?
I like, I like the same. Uh, I was also critical of the, of the first proposal. I think this is much improved. Thank you.
Any more those questions? Anybody else? Kyle?
Do you know, do you have a timeline on when the position might be filled?
I don't. I am, I would assume once it's, if it's approved by the county board, we would probably start on it immediately.
Anybody else? Anybody else? No comments? Okay. Thank you very much. All righty. So where we at? All in favor by saying aye? Any nay? Good, motion passed. All righty. Three recorder of Ds. B, request review of recorder document, document clerk position by content evaluation committee. Can I get a motion? Jim Graw, second. Kyle Patterson? Any discussion? Oh, we have, okay, come on in, Mark, sorry. You here.
Yeah, uh, just, um, we had a, so our, our staff, our permanent staff is myself, chief deputy, and three other people. So five total permanent staff plus one halftime person. And that halftime person who'd been with us for about 18 years, she retired. Over time, her job had, she had a clerk position which was a grade D, but her job responsibilities had kind of shifted over time from the time when we were doing, you know, mortgages were going crazy in 2008 and all that. She had, was pretty much just doing all mail and not really recording documents and not doing customer service work at the counter or answering the phone. So, so as she retires, really the responsibilities that she has, the part-time position she was filling, really doesn't need to be at a grade D. And so I, I'm asking to have that moved to a grade C. The savings for us, because she was an 18-year employee and had quite a bit of a higher rate of pay, it's gonna be about a $5,000 savings doing this. And so the person will handle the mail and then also do a lot of our kind of background document work, which is, uh, they go into modified documents that we're importing and do other things, kind of like what we're doing with our temporary people that, that are, uh, working on our microfilm digitization projects. So, so anyway, we save some money and, and so that's where we're at.
Kyle Patterson?
Can you speak to the LEAP program at ESE and an involvement with this?
Yeah, so, um, if, if this happens, so then, right now, her job responsibilities are being taken over in some part of the, some part, I've taken one of the LEAP, one of the community choices workers that we had. So we have two community choices workers and one of them is doing the mail now. So he's switched over and been trained to do that. So I would anticipate when this job gets opened up and posted that he would apply for it. And, uh, so, so that's, and he, he's doing an excellent job with the responsibilities that he's had. And then, so I have two people working with, from community choices and they've, this is just kind of a whole different little side note, but when we came here, when I came here a year ago, we put 40 hours a week of temporary employees into the, into the budget to do this project. And they are doing, I've hired it 30 hours instead of 40. I thought I'd do three people, we've done two, and the output has been higher than I expected. So, um, so we've actually come out ahead money-wise and the project is going very well. And I anticipate that, that in, at the end of next year, we'll have maybe the best digital record in, in the state. So it's really going well.
Any more of the questions? While Mark is here, go on once, twice. Thank you, sir Mark.
So, yeah, okay, thanks.
Okay. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passed. Four, GIS, a approval of amendment intergovernmental agreement providing for the creation of a geographic information system consortium. Can I get a motion? Kyle first, second motion. Dr. Store? We have anybody here? Director Leeann? Come on up. If anybody needs some clarification, now is the time. Thank you, Leeann. You wanna give us a quick summary real quick, real brief?
Um, the policy committee members requested an edit to the IGA to help encourage membership by smaller municipalities. So there were kind of two minor edits made. So they wanted, so they wanted to encourage a way to, oh my gosh. They wanted to encourage participation for the smaller municipalities while also protecting their investments. So there's just two minor edits, one to section 15, one to section 19. I, I don't know what you received in the packet or not. It's, I don't know if you received a memo or any information regarding it.
Yeah, we got something here. Any questions? Dr. Store?
Sure. Uh, it says new member shall pay an initial buy-in at three times the first year's membership fee payable as a one-time upfront payment. If you talk with some of the target municipalities, is this something that they got out of the, is this something within the, they, there are means to, to pay?
We started down this road just because of some interest from the village of Tolono. And then the committee members kind of set what they felt would be reasonable. So if you're asking me if they went out and discussed this with the different municipalities, no. But this is at a level where the committee members are, the existing members are comfortable with. And it's a huge improvement over what it was because the language previously pretty much would have prevented any membership at all. So, I mean, how do you come up with a equivalent to a pro-rata share of the capital data development costs incurred by the consortium providing, or providing it? I mean, that's an impossible number to, to generate.
Any more questions, comments, thoughts?
Which, which municipalities are members right now?
So it's the main, the larger ones. So you have Champagne, the city of Champagne, Urbana, Savoy, Mohammed, Rancho. So this would be for more targeting places like St. Joe, Silo, Tolono.
Okay. Any more questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, all in favor by saying aye? Any nays? Motion passed. M and five, county clerk, A, May 2019 report has been accepted and placed on file. Six, county executive, A, monthly HR report, May 2019 has been accepted and placed on file as well. B, there is no other business. Does anybody have any business before the board? Okay, seeing none. C, chair report, one, there are no appointments expiring July 30th, 2019. And D, on the consent agenda, is A, one, B. That's not it? Which one is it? Okay. A, two, A, A, three, B, and A, four, A. Did I get it right? I got A, three, B? There's no B? Two, A? Help me out. Two, A? Okay. Two. Thank you. Did you get it, Rita? Thank you. I hand it back over to you, Chair Rosales. That's it.
Jim, you have one last final comment?
Yeah, I just, just to comment that anything tabled in this committee meeting needs to be tabled for the committee. So it can't move out of this committee. Once it's tabled in this committee, it cannot be brought forward at the county board. So if we wanna untable it now and postpone it or move it forward without recommendation, that's the correct way to do it. But when it's in the committee of the whole, it can't be tabled at the committee of the whole and brought forth at a different board meeting. So it, it can't be tabled in committee and then brought to the board. It could be postponed in the committee or forwarded without recommendation, but it cannot be tabled and then brought forward at the next committee, the county board meeting.
Point of order. Would it need to be, would we need to vote on putting it forward without recommendation?
You need to bring it, you need, two motions in my book. You need one to bring it off the table and then you need to move it forward without recommendation.
And that would be?
That would be a separate motion.
That's fine. Okay, so thank you. I, I believe it or not, was actually doing this in order to expedite things and clearly that did not work out. So I will, um, um, take from, I will make the motion to take from the table and I wanna make sure that I'm on the right agenda this time. Item one A and one C under policy and personnel. Okay.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Second motion?
I'll make the motion to move without recommendation to the full board. Items one A and one C from policy and personnel.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Uh, Tinsley and Clifford? And others in favor? Opposed? Great. Then it passes the rec, without recommendation to the next full county board meeting. Thank you one and all for your patience. Have a wonderful night. Have a wonderful night. Any more? I did have one final comment. Lorraine Cowan did call me that she is ill, and she was not able to make tonight's meeting.